It's Patrick. Okay, we'll get started. Welcome to the January 10th, 2022 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme. Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. So the only one we're waiting on is Mr. Laflamme. And if he doesn't show up, Dacey, you can sit in for him as an alternate, please, okay?
No.
And there he is. Okay. It's virtual. All right. All right. So next up is the approval of the minutes from the December 13th, 2021 meeting. Those were included in your packet. And as you know, that meeting, there was some technical difficulties, so they were just a shortened version of the notes. But do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Chairman.
Okay, a motion made by, for approval by Mr. Laflamme. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by, was that Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Corrections, changes?
I have one.
Okay.
Line 115. I believe the Planning Board was going to meet on today's January 10th, not the 13th.
Yep, line 1.
115.
115? Hmm. My packet says line 117. That's where.
Oh.
Yeah, I printed it. All right. It's okay. I had the same comment, just had a different line number. I printed it from the internet today. So I got the same comment. So that was, instead of January 13th, it was January 10th.
Correct.
And actually, the next line, I had the ZBA, it said the 15th, if that's what your packet says, and that's actually the 19th also.
Correct.
So that was another correction that I had along with David's. All right. I've got a couple others. If nobody else online has, I'll go through them. And there were some comments that were provided by the Planning Office also. So I'll just go in order, and hopefully my line numbers may be different than what you have. But under roll call, I got line 28, but it doesn't make a difference. It's under roll call. It says Mr. McPartlin was absent from the meeting tonight. I'd like to add absent/excused, like we typically do, because Mr. McPartlin notified us that he would not be present. So I'd like to add that. Under minutes, I got line 32, but nonetheless, it's the second line after November 8th. It says Chairman Walsh asks if there should be, were any comments. Just a typo. I'll give these to Laura, so she doesn't miss my markup here. And then, under privilege of the floor, which is on page two, or at the top there, it says there were no, I like to add, no emails, requests from residents attending the meeting virtually or in person. So just expand on that. You know, that we asked for all media, you know, all different ways to see if anybody had anything to say during that meeting. And I'll again give this to Laura. So these are all just minor things, nothing critical. And let's see. Also, I got line 116, but it sounds like it's probably like line 114 on yours regarding Balltown Road. The board discussed the case at great length and came to the decision to table the ZBA visit. I'd like to change that, add the board discussed the case at great length and came to the decision with the applicant to table, because, you know, the applicant, you know, was actually, it was their request, right? And under item number six on that page, 2022 meeting calendar, that's blank. We approve the meeting calendar without any comments. All right. Does anybody else have anything else on that minutes? Okay, is everybody okay with the changes? All those in favor of the changes I just went through and David had, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed to the changes? Okay, hearing none opposed. We have modified minutes, and we have a motion and a second on the minutes. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for the December 13th meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, those minutes are approved. And again, Laura, I'll give you my markup later to help out. All right, that brings us to public hearings. We have no public hearings tonight, and we'll move to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niskiuna, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And I'll also ask our town planner, did you receive any emails or notifications or requests to speak virtually tonight?
I didn't receive any requests. I did forward the board an email from Karen Muniz with some concerns for the Balltown Road project, which you had seen in October of 2021.
Right. And those concerns, I think, focused on drainage and potential flooding as a result of the development. And we all have a copy of that later today that was received by everyone, and received in the past also. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, hearing or seeing no one to be heard regarding privilege of the floor, I'll close privilege of the floor. We'll move on. We have no unfinished business tonight, so that's going to bring us right to new business. And under new business, the first up is the recommendation to the ZBA regarding 1356 Balltown Road. This is a recommendation to the ZBA concerning area variances for nine town home buildings, that's 18 dwelling units, at 1356 Balltown Road. David, I don't know if you want to start, or do we want to let the applicant, I know we have Mr. Caponera online, if he wanted to make any statements before we take up this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Victor Caponera here, representing the applicant. The last time I had the pleasure of being there personally was on December 13th. And obviously, that was our one, two, three, fifth appearance in front of the board. I think we've, I've exhausted everything I can possibly say relative to this. And I think we had a pretty thorough understanding on the meeting we had on December 13th relative to this project. And I came away, as did my clients, that if we revised the plan as we have from 20 to 18, it would make a, in my opinion, a substantial and positive bearing on not only this board, but also the Conservation Advisory Board, which in reviewing the documents that Mr. Henry and Laura Roberts sent me today, I see that it did. So I don't think there's any need for me to get into this any deeper beyond that, which we've already done over the last five meetings over the last few months. So I am going to amazingly keep quiet at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Caponera. And before I turn it over, Dave, well, I was going to read David the, like we did last time, because it was updated. So I'm going to read the memo that was prepared by the town planner, dated January 10th, that we're going to take action on tonight on the recommendation to the variances. So just bear with me one moment, because I think this is important. At a regular Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting held on January 10th, the PB reviewed the appeal by Ingles and Associates, LLP, agent for a variance from provisions of Niskiuna Code Schedule IC Part 1, R2 District Schedule of Supplementary Regulations, Town and Niskiuna, as it applies to the property at 1356 Balltown Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in R2 medium-density residential zoning district for an application for sketch plan approval, five lots or more for a major subdivision of 18 townhomes at the 5.3-acre property. Variances include the need for front yard setback, side yard, side setback, excuse me, lot width, lot depth, lot area minimum, and lot maximum coverage. Schedule IC Part 1 lists the front yard setback for lots to be 30 feet. Three of the lots have front yard setbacks that are less, because the lots will be developed as side-by-side townhomes, and there's a typo in the Planning Board document, should say 18 lots, will need a variance from the side setback on the common lot line, which is 15 foot. 14 lots do not meet the lot width requirement of 80 feet. One lot does not meet the lot depth requirement of 100 feet. And 14 lots do not meet the minimum lot area of 9,000 square feet. Four lots exceed the maximum coverage allowed for the lot, which is 30%. Charts for these, the specific variances, were attached for the Planning Board, for the public. It's in the packet. And basically, the first chart lists all the area variances required. The second chart basically gives the data for what the delta is that's required for the deviation from the normal, okay? I would also like to mention for Laura that there was just a typo on the Planning Board pocket, but the zoning board packet was correct, the one that was sent out. So that one did state 18, so there's no problem with the zoning board appeals packet, okay? All right. So tonight, we got, unless there's any discussion, Dave, we can go into this, or unless you want to summarize anything that you've looked at tonight?
I think just for the record, we should summarize that the current site plan configuration has removed two of the units, so it's down to 18, 18 total townhomes. Some of the items that we had talked about, about maximizing open space, preserving some of the original wooded area in the center part of town, and also sliding a couple of the units up so that they're not in direct pathways of headlights and things like that. Minor adjustments to the site plan has been, has been made since our last meeting in December.
Okay. All right. And again, the area variances, you know, all go together, because obviously, denial of any of the area variances will not make the site plan as submitted workable. So we can just take them all at once and just make a recommendation on the group of variances that were summarized in the table, all right? So the first question for the board, and I guess also would like to mention that Ms. Gold is sitting in tonight as an active member of the board for us when it comes to voting. And so, first question we have is, is there an effect on the comprehensive plan, Mr. Diopino?
No.
Okay, and there's no effect on the comprehensive plan? We want to talk about specifics first? Or you want to vote on that? And I guess we should talk about the specifics first. Okay, do you have any, Dave? I'm sure you have some. I also got a list too.
Okay. So, the current zoning classification will continue to have a residential usage, and it will fulfill a current need for this type of housing in town, which is something that we have in our comprehensive plan. There is a negligible impact on the traffic count that will be done by this. And also, I believe that they utilize the, they utilize the maximum amount of new buildings that they could based on the 17 R2 single-family dwelling units.
Okay, thank you, David. I also got some comments. I just gave Dave a copy, and I'll provide a copy to the town planner. What I did was, I tried to go through the comprehensive plan page by page, and look at it areas of the comprehens where I believe there's no effect where the comprehensive plan supports the submittal. Again, it's open for interpretation, and, you know, each board member will have an opportunity to agree or disagree, and of course, vote. So I just like to add, just for public's information, for the board's information, on page five of the comprehensive plan, "Plan encourages housing of various types, sizes, and costs to meet the needs of people at various stages in the life cycle, which is income, age levels, household compositions, et cetera. New development shall not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood." I'd just like to note that this proposal offers diversity within the appropriate R2 zoning district. So I think that's applicable to page five of the comprehensive plan. Page 28 and 30 of the comprehensive plan states that we should, we should support pedestrian movement. Final approvals of this plan include sidewalks, extensions, new sidewalks. And I think it'll also make a path or a route to be able to get from Balltown Road to Van Antwerp Road without going around. So I feel that this supports the transportation goal of pedestrian movability. Also, page 91, under land use, it's noted that this area, Balltown, is subarea B5, okay? And then on page 94, "Town should continue to uphold the existing zoning standards in place that encourage pedestrian-friendly movement." Again, it's similar to the last one, but I just want to state that that supports this plan, because this is a submittal. Townhomes are allowed in the R2 zoning district, like David said, so there's how it correlates back to the comprehensive plan. Also, on the comprehensive plan, on page 98, there's an issue area with housing diversity. Niskiuna is primarily composed of single-family homes. While townhomes are considered single-family homes, there appears to be a need, in my opinion, for this housing diversity. So I think it's appropriate, and that's why no effect on the comprehensive plan. Does anybody else have any other specifics they'd like to mention, or disagree with any of those comments that Dave or I had?
I actually think it still has a negative effect on the comprehensive plan, because the lots don't meet the requirements significantly. However, it's a much improved plan. The transportation goal you mentioned would be fine, except I thought I read in the packet that this is to be a private road, in which case it isn't going to be open to the public. I don't know how Highway Department feels about that. I have a problem with it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gold. That's a good point. Obviously, we haven't gotten that far into details. I think a private road is the current submittal, but we need to work through that based on, you know, continuing to work on this project. Even if it is a private road, I think from pedestrian movement, I believe people would still be able to walk from Balltown Road to Van Antwerp and utilize that path, you know, so they don't have to go, you know, towards CVS and through the CVS parking lot around. So I think it still personally supports, like, transportation, pedestrian movement, in my opinion. Any other comments from anybody else?
Hi. Hi, Chairman. This is Dave Ingles. I'm online here as well. We did discuss this at the CAC meeting, and just to reiterate, there is proposed sidewalk connectivity from CVS all the way up to Van Antwerp Village. And our clients at the last meeting with the CAC said that even though the roadway would be private, they did not anticipate it to be gated. So assuming that people could be, come through orderly and conduct themselves, you know, without any type of problems, they did think that there could be a potential to make that connection over the private road. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ingles. Anybody else from the board? I think what I'd like to do here is maybe call the roll on this one, since it's a little bit complex, make sure we understand where everybody's at. So the proposal from Mr. Diopino is no effect on the comprehensive plan. Mr. Henry, could you call the roll on that? No effect on the comprehensive plan, agree or disagree?
Mr. Laflamme.
Agree.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Agree.
Mr. Khan.
Agreed.
Mr. McPartlin.
Agreed.
Mr. Darpino.
Agree.
Ms. Gold.
Disagree.
Chairman Walsh.
Agree. Six votes affirmative, no effect on the comprehensive plan. Thank you. Next up is suitability of the use in the area proposed. Mr. Diopino?
Yes, I believe this is a suitable use.
Okay. Do you have any specifics that you'd like to discuss?
Yes, it maintains the residential usage of the parcel, utilizes 18 units per the 17 of the R2 single-family dwelling units that was based on the original site evaluation. This current plan also has reduced the number of variances since the inception of the project, which I think is also a benefit. Number three is a partial redevelopment of current lots. There are five townhomes that are currently, I'm sorry, five single-family homes that are currently on Balltown Road that will be redeveloped in the same footprint of new building. And also, it does retain a larger section of the wooded area centered in the town center.
Okay. Thank you, David. Proposal suitable, I have some, and I'll try to be careful, because I think I might have some of the same ones Dave has. But one of them is, and we've talked about this, but it's, another reason it's suitable is that townhomes are allowed in the R2 zoning district, so there's no zone change requested here. There's less curb cuts. If it was developed as a 17-home, single-family proposal, if it was developed in that such a way, there would be more curb cuts. And by, the current proposal reduces those curb cuts. So instead of eight total, there would be two as a result of this application along Balltown and Van Antwerp. This proposal sits between two neighborhood commercial properties, CVS and the WRGB, so I think it's a good location for housing diversity. If you look at Section 22048, 2.2.E of the zoning code, you would like to have a harmonious transition between commercial and residential properties. And I believe that this, this does that by having the townhomes in its allowed net area. And another note, that some of these, the applicant also had in their submittal, its owner occupied, which is something we were striving for. Dave mentioned the traffic. The design minimizes cut-throughs, because it's a torturous path, so it's not, I mean, you could cut through, but it's, it's not like a straight-line shot, which would promote it, okay? Because of redevelopment, like Dave said, I think would be a visual improvement over the existing. One other key point, I think, from the applicant is no setback variance are being requested to any of the adjoining properties. And 18 of the area variances are due to the common side lot. So since townhomes are allowed, but not incorporated in our zoning code, that requires a variance. You know, if the zoning code is something we're going to have to take a look at, now update for townhomes. Now, if it was updated appropriately, there would be 18 less variances required, which would push the total number of variances down to 36. I think that's important. So the proposal is suitable. Anybody have any other comments or likes to support that is suitable, or questions?
I'm going to surprise you, Ms. Leslie. I've gone back and forth on whether it's suitable. And ultimately, it's still residential. It's not what we think of as R2 development, but we do allow for it, that it will leave a larger parcel of land as open space or such, I think is desirable. We've really reduced the habitat for wildlife, both flora and fauna, especially fauna, but, and I think that's kind of a balancing factor for me. So I'm going to go with it's suitable.
Okay. Any other comments from board members?
I just would like to put on the record that I appreciate the applicants working with the Planning Board to reduce the number of variances that are going to be requested of the ZBA.
Okay. All right, any other comments? All right, Mr. Henry, I'd like you also call the roll. So the proposal is that it's suitable for the area proposed, suitable use. Agree or disagree? Mr. Henry?
Mr. Laflamme.
Agree.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Agree.
Mr. Khan.
Agree.
Mr. McPartlin.
Agreed.
Mr. Darpino.
Agree.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Agree. Okay, it's unanimous that it's suitable. And the last section, before we send this on, the ZBA is our recommendation to the ZBA. Mr. Diopino?
I'm recommending that this project be submitted to the ZBA.
And that it, that ZBA approve all area variances?
Correct.
Okay.
As submitted.
Yep.
So I recommend to submit to the zoning for approval for the area lot sizes and setbacks as per the attached charts that were accompanied in our packet. I believe the ZBA received the same information also.
Yep. Okay, so the recommendation is that the ZBA approve all the group of area variances. I guess we'll just call the roll. Mr. Henry, please.
Mr. Laflamme.
Agree.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino, obviously, aye. Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. And it's unanimous that the zoning, or that the Planning Board requests that the zoning board approve all area variances. Okay, thank you. That was the business tonight for Balltown Road. Does anybody have anything else regarding 1356 Balltown Road? Anything from the applicant for tonight?
Thank you very much for your consideration in this matter. As you know, it's taken years to get to this point, and we appreciate the willingness to work with the applicant, the owners, professionals on this. And hopefully, we will have a productive meeting next Wednesday night. Thank you very much.
Great. Good luck.
Yeah. Yes, I'd like to thank the board as well. This is Dave. Took us a little while to get here, but we listened to the board, and we appreciate the support going forward to the ZBA.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night, everyone. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up is Resolution 2022-1, a resolution for site plan approval, a two-year extension to site plan approval of the Capitol District Jewish Holocaust Memorial at 2501 Troy's Connected Road. And as usual, I'll just summarize. And bottom line is, this resolution is the same as the previous resolution that granted approval. There's only one new condition, so I'm not going to read the multiple conditions. It's available for the public in the packet online on the town webpage. There's just one condition that was added, and that was per Niskiuna Town Code, Section 220-48E, "Final Site Plan Approval Shall Expire Two Years After the Date of This Written Final Approval of the Planning Board Unless Construction In accordance with the approved plan has begun or an additional extension of time has been granted by the Planning Board. Otherwise, all conditions are the same." Mr. Khan or Mr. Laflamme, do I have a motion for approval of this resolution?
Motion, Chairman Walsh.
Motion's made by Mr. Khan for approval. Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded by Mr. Laflamme. Thank you. Any discussion at all, or anything from the applicant, if the applicant's online?
Dan Hubbell from Whitman Osterman and Hannah is here on behalf of the applicant. I think the memo from Laura pretty much explains what the current situation is, and we sincerely appreciate the board providing us this extension.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have?
And Mr. Hubbell, you know, one of the things that came up, you know, they obviously weren't captured well in the minutes, but, look, at the end of the day, you know, both the town and the planning board overwhelmingly support this project. And the one thing we just want to ensure is that no significant amount of disturbance or clearing of the site occurs while you don't have line of sight to completely, you know, finishing the project, right?
Correct, right. And going back to the letter that I sent to you probably early on in all this, there's no intent to start any construction activities on site, including scrubbing and grubbing the site, until we have financing in place, funds and financing in place.
Yep.
And that remains the commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution's approved, two-year extension is granted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. All right. And the last resolution for tonight is Resolution 2022-2, a resolution to call for a public hearing for a daycare Capitol Kids Care to operate within existing place of worship at 1930 Hillside Avenue. And just to summarize that resolution, resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission hereby determine that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment, hereby directs, oh, it looks like there's a typo there. Something's missing on that one. It usually says hereby directs the.
The town planner filed a negative declaration.
Yeah, I marked it up to read it, but I didn't read it all at home, apparently.
Sorry about that.
All right, so that'll be adjusted. It's the standard wording that we use. And then, further resolved that this planning board does hereby call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, January 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, the Niskiuna Town Hall Office Building, One Niskiuna Circle, and by video conference to consider the application of Caitlin Brownell for site plan review and special use permit for a tenant change to operate in after-school and summer camp at 1930 Hillside Avenue, Niskiuna. I have a motion on this resolution to calling for the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, move for approval by Ms. Gold. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diopino. Thank you. Any discussion? Basically, you know, this is calling for the public hearing. We have to have the public hearing and make a recommendation for the town board, and the town board will have a public hearing. And then, based on the outcome and their feeling, they will issue the special use permit, at which time it would come back for final approval from this board. And I believe, Laura, you mentioned that there was a daycare center there before, but that's probably expired, that special use permit are not applicable, because it's a new tenant, so we have to go through the process again.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Right, but I think it is worthwhile for the applicant to mention that to the public, right, that this is, this is not a quote-unquote "new" use in the precedence of the site.
Correct. Do we have the applicant online tonight?
Yeah, they are here.
Would you like to add anything? Is it Ms. Brownell online?
Hi, this is Kate Brownell. No, I don't have anything to add, just the, you know, proposed traffic layout that Laura has up, but that's it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have more discussion, obviously, and we'll hear what the public has to say, assuming we pass this resolution. Any other comments from the board regarding this resolution? Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme. Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution's approved, and we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting, right? The twenty-fourth, yep. One thing, we don't have this on the agenda under discussion tonight, but I'd just like to propose, if it's okay with the board, that we also have a tentative resolution making a positive recommendation for the special use permit for the town board at that meeting also. It could be a tentative resolution. If we hear anything that we're not aware of from the public, that there's any concerns, we can table that resolution. But I think this will help the applicant to move the process along if we have a tentative resolution for that night. Does anybody have any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. Seeing a lot of thumbs up and head shakes, so I think we'll be okay, and we'll have a tentative resolution so we can try to help move this along, okay? Don't expect it to be controversial, but we'll have a public hearing and find out. Okay, so that's it for Capital Care tonight. Thank you, Ms. Brownell.
Thank you.
All right. And a new item under, we'll move on to discussion items. Under discussion tonight, we have thirty-eight-hundred State Street. This is a new project, site plan application for a tenant change at S and G Roofing. And I believe we have the applicant here. So it was in our packet, and we have the applicant here, so why don't I just turn it over to the applicant? Could you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you can tell us what's going on here? How's that?
I need to recuse myself.
My name is Sukdev Singh.
Sorry, one moment.
I have to recuse myself from this application. I have a professional relationship with the current owner of the building.
Thank you, David, sorry.
So my name is Sukdev Singh. The address where I live, it's one-ninety-one Fillmore Avenue, Niskunat, one-two-three-zero-four. So I have submitted the application for this building I'm trying to buy. Right now, I am at the four-zero-one-three Stacy, that's where it's my business now, been there three, four years. And this building became available, is much bigger, twice as much square feet, and much more storefront, and the parking lot is huge. So we would like to move into that building if I can buy it.
Right. And that's the, I guess it was a truck modification business?
Yeah, it used to be a district truck equipment, I think.
Yeah, they did, yeah, four-wheeling bed liners, customization, I believe, at one time there also.
I never been there before, but I've been there now a couple times. And it's been vacant for a few months now.
All right, so this is a tenant change in that location, zoned, let's see, is this highway commercial?
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial, just like the other property is. So it's basically moving the business from one location to another.
Correct.
And again, some sketches were included in the packet of the proposal, parking, and so on and so forth. Did you have any, I know you're across the street pretty much, did you have any lessons learned from that site that you're going to try to apply to the new site?
Just we kind of, that, that, that location that became, it's very, I thought it was big enough, but it's turned out to be very tight now.
It's tight.
Yeah. And just the parking spot, I think, is be more benefit to us now.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't have any, any experience that I could learn anything I want to say, yeah.
Yeah. All the vehicles, your vehicles that you use for business, are they all parked at that location, the current location, or are they?
They are, the trucks and trailers are parked there, yeah, you know, yeah.
Okay, so just, so it's really no different?
The garage, trails on the back, it's kind of tight, you know, doing it. If this building didn't become available, I guess we still had to, you know, deal with it, but I know it will be very good, you know, opportunity for us.
All right. Laura, can you pull up the hand sketch that was submitted with his application? I don't know how well.
It's, it's so light.
It's hard to see, but again, it's in the packet. For anybody that has a hard time seeing it, they can pull up the packet at our webpage. One of the things that I want to mention, well, a couple of things, is that I don't know if the town had the opportunity yet to, you know, calculate square footage and make sure we had enough parking. So this is a new submittal, so that's something that has to be done. My guess is, just from looking at the site plan, it looks like it should be more than adequate, but we just got to validate that, that the parking is, based on square footage, is adequate. One thing I did like is that I see on, I think it's this next page where you show where the, I guess you could call it the business vehicles are going to be parked, they're more toward the center of the lot, and you have like automobile parking, or visitor parking, or employee parking around the perimeter. I kind of like that because there is one house, one residence to the south of this location. So by pulling those vehicles up where you propose, I think that's a good thing, keeps away from the, you know, any noise from the neighbors, or minimizes the noise to neighbor. So I thought that was pretty good. One thing I didn't see was a dumpster enclosure or dumpster proposed or site.
Right now, we had it behind the building. So when you enter from this south hammers right there, the entrance, you go, like, keep it left. I think you still see the trailer right there.
Okay, so there's a, there's a current dumpster there now?
Yes, yes, they were there. You won't see any here, they're there.
Do you have quite the need for your business to utilize a dumpster?
Yeah, we usually have one dumpster because we're roofing company. We take debris every day with us to the dump.
All right. So we just have to make sure that it's shown on the plan where the dumpster is and whether or not we require any, any shielding at all. Okay, Laura?
Yeah, so that's going to be somewhere up over here, I think.
Yeah, it's, let me see.
Up in here.
It's right actually, yeah. They were right, yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to, you know, show the dumpster on the plan, and encourage the board, obviously, take a, take a ride over there.
Sure.
And drive through the parking lot to check, to check this out. That's one of the things I noticed, you know, obviously, you know, it's a commercial, and it's good to have a good reuse, and I'm assuming that, you own the current building?
I'm still going to keep that, yeah.
You're going to keep that building?
Yeah. I got a couple of different type of business, roofing and general construction.
All right.
So we'll keep the smaller business there for now.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the boards, thoughts from any board members? No? Seems to be pretty straightforward. Just, you know, some cleanup and review by the planning office, make sure it's compliant with the ordinance. And I think we can get there, right? So is this something that we should also have a tentative resolution on for a, it's a change of tenant, basically?
I would recommend one.
Yeah. And again, it wants the planning board, again, has the opportunity just to look at parking, make sure the dumpster, and compare that to the code requirements. If everything's okay, there won't be any issues. If it isn't okay, well, we'll have an opportunity, once it gets, the review gets done, to make corrections, okay? But in the meantime, we'll call for a tentative resolution. Is everybody okay with that on the board? All right. All right, seeing, seeing no one that's not concerned with that, then we'll call for a tentative resolution for a tenant change, to support your tenant change application, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, at the next meeting, which is the twenty-fourth of January.
So I do need to come back on January twenty-fourth?
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, she needs that. You know, pretty quick tonight, isn't it? My guard. All right, so that was it for discussion. We don't have a project lead. If somebody wants to be project lead, make the recommendation at the next meeting. They could email myself or Mr. Henry or Laura, okay, on this one. It's pretty straightforward. It's not a big deal if we don't. Let's see, the only thing I want to add tonight was that we want to also call for a resolution recognizing Mr. Oster for his many years of dedicated service to the board. I'm assuming everybody is okay with that. So we'll call, we'll have that resolution at our next meeting also, okay? And we missed Mr. Oster already, but we'll have that, recognizing his dedicated service at our next meeting. All right. Anything else under discussion? Anybody else have anything before we move on to reports?
The only thing I could think of is, you know, when we looked at Craig Seraphini on State Street, we did have him, like, look at adding some additional landscaping to kind of spruce up the area. So maybe when Clark and I are checking the parking, we can also see if there's a couple places they could add something to it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because it's like a, I wish I'd brought it up when he was, I was just thinking of it when you were talking. But we can bring it up with them and just see if there's a couple of things you could add on there to improve it.
Yeah, I'll take a ride over to and take a look. The building doesn't look bad, you know.
Yeah, it is in pretty good shape. It has some variances associated with it already, so we'll double-check those things.
Great. All right, so that's it under discussion items, then. Any other things we can talk about under reports? We'll move on to reports. Planning Department updates. Laura or Clark, anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention that Knott's Landing has requested a temporary CO for their building. They're very close to being ready. And Rivers Ledge has also requested a temporary CO for their first building. So both those projects are, you know, basically at, at least out level. So that's kind of exciting. It's a lot of work that they've put into the town over the last year and a half.
Okay, Laura, you want to go down to reports? Anything else you want to add? Do you want me to read these?
Unless you guys had project-specific questions.
Any questions from the board on any of the, past or current projects? No, I don't see anything, Laura. Anything else under reports with the COVID-19 or reappointments?
Yeah, COVID-19 updates, I mean, I've said this before, I think that we'll, we'll have a hybrid option indefinitely. I think it helps when we have faraway applicants or planning board members that are traveling. But as far as I know, like, we're just staying in the course for now. So I appreciate you guys all, you know, being flexible as always.
It's going to work pretty well tonight, so, good.
And then the board reappointments. I submitted all the names. They're on the town board for tomorrow.
Okay. Yep, organizational meeting tomorrow night, along with the agenda meeting and oath of office for our new town board members and supervisor. Okay, anything else, Laura, under reports? Does anybody have any questions for Laura under reports? No? Okay. All right, Commission Business. Mr. Diopino, you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. McPartlin, anything?
Well, in hearing some people recounting of the December meeting specifically regarding the Ball Town Road application, I'm a little sorry I missed the, the discussion. Typically, I'll tune into the YouTube video for highlights. Is there any transcript of the meeting that I can reference?
Sadly, we don't know exactly how it happened, but that, the sound got turned off about forty seconds into that meeting, and we reached out to YouTube, and we did everything we could to try and recover it. But it was unrecoverable, and we didn't have a backup for that night because we haven't been having problems in forever. We have officially started backing up our meetings like three times, but there isn't any way to recover that meeting. I apologize for that. No one was more frustrated by that than me. It was a very lengthy and great back-and-forth discussion, and I'm, I'm very sad that it didn't get captured.
Anything else, Mr. McPartlin?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Khan?
I would just like to say, and this is for Mr. Diopino, and what gave birth to the Architectural Review Board, the Knott's Landing building does look pretty nice, in my opinion, at least. It, it, it's actually, you know, it's, you know, it's a very upscale addition to that side of the street as you're approaching, you know, the buildings that you see from Van Antwerp Village, Post Office, et cetera. So I think, you know, Mr. Diopino and the work you did on that, we had a lot of back-and-forth at the board level also. But, you know, I think that building looks very nice.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Khan, and I agree, hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Laflamme?
No, sir.
Ms. Gold, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Shenfield?
Nope, nothing for me this evening.
Okay, and I have nothing for tonight, except for Happy New Year, glad to see everybody, and stay warm tomorrow. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, looks like Mr. Laflamme raised his hand there. Do I have a second? Oh, second. Oh, Mr. Scrubby Tennis, second. Okay. Mr. Laflamme and Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Okay, we are adjourned. All those in favor, adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, hearing none oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Quick meeting, appreciate it.